This livestream brought to you by the Excelsior Citizen and these generous sponsors. Our Excelsior Springs Hospital, where better care is right in your backyard. The Simmons Sales Team, your hometown Realtors.
For the we're talking about our dedication to preventing and restoring power outages, our pursuit of safety, or providing the best member experience possible, we are relentless in serving our communities.
Find out how you can advertise with Excelsior Springs' number one community resource. Visit excelsiocitizen.com today.
All right, first up is entertain a motion to adopt the consent agenda. First by Kaylin. Second by Jill. All those are favorite. I pass the six to you. Well Brett, since Aaron's not here tonight, you get to be the MSBA delegate.
What do you got for us? You should play video.
Welcome to the July edition of the Missouri School Boards Association's Board Report. We begin by looking at how a very busy legislative session affects school policy and what to watch for as the new school year approaches. MSBA's Chief Labor, Law, and Policy Officer Susan Goldhammer says that while many policies are being updated, there are two that are getting the most attention.
There's two that I have districts that are really looking for. And one has gotten a lot of media attention and it's the cell phone policy. So Senate Bill 68 imposes a pretty strict rule regarding student use of not just cell phones, but all personal communication devices. And students are not allowed to use or display these devices essentially from bell to bell throughout the instructional day. That includes lunchtimes and passing periods, which a lot of districts have been a little bit more lenient on. Now, once the law goes into effect August 28th, this will be a complete ban. And many districts have contacted us saying, oh my gosh, we've got to have a policy on this, where's this policy, where's this policy? And you are getting a policy. The policy is on its way. But I do want to point out, if you use MSBA standard policy language, and some districts have customized it, but if your district uses our standard JG dash R, which is the Student Code of Conduct, it already prohibits student use of cell phones and other personal communication devices during the instructional day, including lunch periods and breaks. And so many districts are in better shape than what they thought. And they don't, we are of course going to get a more thorough policy with all of the exceptions and the law listed, and that is coming. The other one, which I think is going to get a little bit more attention as we get closer to school starting, is that the legislature has now passed a law that requires school districts to allow resident students who are homeschooled, attending family-paced education, which is essentially a homeschool where they accept voucher money, or attending virtual schools. Those kids in your district are required to have an opportunity to participate in district athletics, fine arts, and co-curricular activities, even if the child is not enrolled in their district. So that's kind of a big change, and I think as word gets out to our homeschooling community, districts are going to see more headlines, and I think they're going to see more parents acquiring about participation.
Susan reminds us that policy updates can't be sent out until after the governor signs the bills. In the meantime, she says it's important to make sure your district isn't behind on policy adoption.
It's a problem for a lot of school districts because that essentially means they're out of compliance with the law. We encourage any district that uses our policy services to please, please contact us. We will help you get caught up. I will personally talk to you and explain to you the changes we can help you plow through, but we really need to get caught up. MSBA typically sends out four updates a year. This year, we could have five or six updates. And so it's a busy year, and we just really don't want people to get behind.
Watch your email for the weekly and other updates for more policy news and information from MSBA. Susan covered so much important policy information that we couldn't fit it all into the board report. So visit the MSBA website or the MSBA YouTube channel to see the full interview with Susan. MSBA recently held a summer summit, and at the conclusion of the summit during the delegate assembly, Shelley Mantella of the Mountain View Birch Tree School District was sworn in as president of the Missouri School Boards Association after serving as president-elect for the past year. She told board members attending the summit that one of her themes in the coming year is servant leadership.
So as board members and leaders in education, we hold the future in our hands each day. We can choose to lead in many ways, but I hope in the year to come that we will choose to lead with a servant's heart and work tirelessly to energize the mind and will of our Missouri Public Schools so that we are always the school of choice for Missouri's children. I look forward, excuse me, I look forward to leading as a servant leader and walking beside you as we move Missouri's public education to the next level. Thank you for your support and your confidence in my leadership, and I look forward to serving with you. Thank you.
MSBA state officers elected during the delegate assembly meeting held at the summit include President-elect Keisha Lee of the Ladue School District and Vice President Riley Hartwell of the Joplin School District. And registration is now open for MSBA's fall regional meetings and for the 2025 MSBA Annual Conference in cooperation with the Missouri Association of School Administrators and the Missouri Association of School Business Officials. Visit the MSBA website for information on both of these upcoming events. That's it for this month. Thanks for allowing us to have some time at your board meeting, and we'll see you in August for the next MSBA Board Report.
Brett, can I ask you something? I want to say I went through the board training a few months ago through MSBA, and it was excellent. They do a very good job. It was enjoyable to sit with some other board members as well and talk about things. So I know it's not related to that report, but I did find it very, very helpful.
No visitors, so we're moving on to the superintendent's report.
Thank you, the pleased of the board, I'd like to share some updates from throughout the district. First, I would like to thank each of you board members for your supports and leadership as I transitioned to the new role. Very excited to help lead our district, our students, and our staff, work with our community for the betterment of our schools. So thank you for the trust in doing that. I would also like to thank my team, Dr. Everett, Dr. Miller, and Mr. Gilke on all their hard work these first nine days leading up to my transition and also throughout the summers we kick off. So thank you guys for your hard work. Appreciate you, and thank you very much. First off, we have some summer capital projects updates. So the first one's the wall coverings. So the wall covering's out at Elkhorn, complete. This is something we learned through the building of Cornerstone and then adding these to the building at Lewis. The walls at Cornerstone really were taking a beating. A lot of the new buildings, it's not necessarily your block building, it's going to be your drywall, so we found out those get beat up and dirty when you have kids walking around trying to touch them and putting stuff on the walls. So these have really made a difference, so that was part of those capital upgrades through the Lewis, is adding those at Elkhorn, and they're currently being added to Cornerstone now the summer school's over. So there's a picture of kind of the examples of those from out at Elkhorn. Central office roof, so we're still waiting on the supplies that we ordered for the central office roof, so as soon as those get in, they'll be out to do that. It's about a four to six day job depending on the weather. It's a very small roof, that doesn't mean it's cheap, but it's a very small roof, so as soon as we get that, they'll be able to work it in between larger projects. We're excited to get that done. Next summer capital projects, the high school parking lot repairs. So the repaving of the high school's underway with the weather and then with some issues they ran into, kind of instead of it being one lot at a time, they're all kind of working on them all at the same time. So we were hoping to get it done mostly over dead week, and right now it's running over. As you can see, some of those potholes in the KAC parking lot were more like toddler waiting pools, so very deep, very large. We were prepared for those, there were some other areas that we've run into in the front of the building and then on the drive down to the old tennis courts for you that have been around for a while, that really, we're having some extra work that's going to have to be done, that's going to add to that cost a little bit. So that's going to be an emergency update that we have to do through this process as we get done. Really what's happening is it's been so long since these have been done, as they mill up to two inches, really they're having to mill four inches because they mill the two inches and it's just breaking up. Mr. Gilke and I went out there, as they were looking at this, and you could just pick up pieces of the pavement, and it's just breaking up. So there's a section of that front high school in front of the building, the lower half, that they're going to have to do a four inch mill and then fill that. And then there's another section, the very beginning of that double gate that drives down to the old tennis court lots, there's another one of these big potholes there, so we're going to do the first six or 10 feet there, and so that's going to have to be a four inch mill and fill as well. Mr. Berry's working with them on that, we're looking at about the $50,000 range to get that in. Typically what you would do is we would have built in some type of contingency in our capital funds. We didn't necessarily have that here being ready going through the transition, so you'll see that revision as we do a budget revision here at the quarter, we'll try to do this quarterly. It's kind of the plan to do that, so you'll see that coming through. So that'll just be an emergency revision update that honestly we need to do, or we would have to do the whole park parking lot again in a year and it would cost much more. So this will get us much farther down further than that four inch mill. So something that you can't really predict until you get in there, you hope that it's not much. It's honestly a much larger parking lot than Elkhorn, and we're having less issues here than we were out at Elkhorn. So if you remember back, it was quite a bit larger, expensive, it came kind of last minute on hit because essentially the whole under, the under pavement wasn't there. So that's just an update on that, kind of how we feel that, but it'll all be fun for. And then I think that's it on the summer capital projects. Looking at exciting news, so Chief Dole and Lieutenant Rennie shared with me that Chief Dole has requested support from the Public Sales Tax Committee, which is the marijuana tax, to use that tax form revenue. He's requested that we use that to add a fourth SRO for our buildings to ensure safety and security across the districts. We're really excited about that. That was just something that as Lieutenant Rennie and I were meeting to update the MOU for the district for safety and security, I said, hey, we have this, is this something that we could possibly do during personnel? It was something that had talked with Mr. Hall about, who's also on the committee, and so Chief Dole's actually put that request in, and so we're waiting to see what we hear back from that. That's a long process, they have to find someone, they have to train them, they have to get it in, so you're looking at anywhere from a six month to a year process, and that's if it's approved. So I'll keep you updated on that as we hear more, but that's something that could be exciting, kind of helps spread out, you know, that safety and security across the district. Something I tell people that I'm very proud of, having been here for 20 plus years and having kids here and family here, is we know some of the things that have happened in our district that our SROs have helped mitigate or keep from being a big issue. What we'll never know is what their presence has done to prevent things. You'll never know that. And I think that's a good thing, right? So we haven't had some of those big things, knock on wood, but you never know by having one of those SRO cars out front or knowing what that response be, or never knowing whether those are in the building or not, but that's prevented, and that's something that I'm proud of as a school district that we always prioritize. And hopefully this is something that through that sales tax we continue to prioritize. So I think kind of good in that. Summer school success, so that was a huge, we had great success with summer school, lots of field trips, lots of exciting kids doing lots of stuff from the community center, going to parks, and one of them got, one of the classes got to go to Bass Pro, and they have three fishing pools. So they have a lot of excitement, my group are excited, they never wanted to miss, we have very good enrollment. And just a reminder for summer school, that's additional ADA that our district gets to collect, which means additional revenue. So the more kids we enroll, the more hours they attend, that helps our revenue, helps our ADA. So we always want to keep that, but it's also good. We always know there's a summer learning loss, kids aren't around school for two years, for two months, there's going to be some learning loss there. So if we can have fun activities and we can have learning along the way, it's a win-win for everybody. And so Dr. Harrison of the School will have a summer school kind of update and capstone that in the August meeting. So looking forward to hearing that. Upcoming things for us as admin teams, our admin boot camp retreat will be July 30th and 31st. Don't really look at retreat as, you know, going on vacation, because that's not it at all. So the first day, we're going to do some dis training, so it's going to be leadership team training for both the cabinet, the central office, and your building administrators. We'll go through a dis profile, understanding our styles, understanding our team styles, understanding the overview of the team, building trust with each other, leading more effectively. Then have a pundrick or a team builder that day. And then day two, going into more vision and culture, so priorities for the year, beliefs, where we want to go, kind of our vision as a leadership team, teamwork and planning kind of made by you, and that's what we'll do that second day. And then August 1st will be our annual legal seminar, which is fun stuff. It's actually not bad, it's a long four or five hours, it's a lot of legal updates, it's a lot of watch out for this, but there's also some things where they kind of give you some tips and hints. And so a couple of years ago, we actually didn't take the assistant principals, which is one of those lead principals, and they actually enjoyed it. It's a lot, it's like drinking from a fire hose, but I think they enjoy getting kind of that legal update, kind of that guidance that helps them build that relationship with our legal team that they can reach out. So it's a good day of planning, it's good for us. It turns out to be a long day, but that's kind of the capstone of our three days of coming back. Something I want to talk with you guys about instead up here, some potential board work sessions, some things that I would like to do, so upcoming, so long range financial planning, strategic outlook, just kind of engage in a forward-looking session on our financial outlook right now and in the future, some key topics, look at maintaining strong budgets, staying competitive in compensation and benefits, and then how are we going to meet rising costs, evolving student needs and facility needs? So working with a former superintendent that now does some finance stuff, coming in and presenting to you guys and just kind of looking at our stuff. So I don't, I meet with him next week and with their team, and so I don't know the dates that he's available yet, but that would be a end of July, August type of thing that we would want to meet. So once we get some potential dates for that, I'll bring it to you guys, and we'll look at having a work session then. So hopefully with these work sessions, we do them, we're looking at an hour, we get in, hear from the presenter, we can have a talk, there's no action taken there, it's just discussion and learning, and then we kick it out. So that's the goal there, and once I get those dates, we'll get out to you guys and try to make a determination on that. Strategic planning and C SIP, so something I've been talking about for probably the last four or five months. We're doing our comprehensive school approval plan, we're really going through a deep dive into our strategic planning, working as a district, but also with our community and stakeholders, and building our plan for what is our vision for Excelsior Springs Schools for the next five years. So looking forward to that. The days will be after that, so I actually have Ash and I coming up, so we'll look at either October 7th or 11th, we can look at that, whichever one's best for the group, we determine that here in a couple minutes. We'll have the Cambridge group come in and they'll present to us, and kind of follow out their process using the Cambridge model, what that means for us, and if we think that can be our means. And then the last item I have is just some legislative updates. So MSBA update, kind of stole the thunder, but the personal technology devices, cell phone and personal electronic devices like your smartwatches, so that's come into legislation. So once that bill's signed, so that will be from bell to bell, those are not, will not be allowed in instructional time and mealtime. Something that we're waiting for some guidance on MSBA on is there were about four different bills that they were proposing, so what we're looking at the language is, what are they, is passing period time allowable time or not allowable time? And then what our admin team doing, Dr. Hartman's been doing a good job of working not only with Mr. Kaufman at the middle, or Dr. Kaufman at the middle school, but also with some surrounding schools on what their vision is for their schools. So we're kind of doing what's going on around us, not only working with her team, but also working with those schools we have an idea. And then I have a work session tomorrow with some area superintendents, we'll discuss the same topic for our schools. So just kind of see where we're at. Talking to Mr. Gilke about just sending an update to families, because we know they've been hearing some things here and there, so we're just going to send a brief update to families later this week, so just let them know this is coming. We don't have exactly what the bill looks like or the language will look like, we know it's going to be bell to bell, what exactly that looks like, the access during safety, you know, if there are emergency situations and stuff like that, you know, we'll lay all that out. Essentially, we need to have that set in place before school starts. And so what you can look forward to is probably a hand update at the August meeting before school starts, so we know exactly what we'll be sharing with our families. But we want to get ahead of the information and share that home before they, you know, before they get too far in the summer. So we'll work out some language together and share that out later this week with our families and students. Some other legislative news, so Governor Keough did approve the full funding of the SAT, which is great news. You know, something that I'm very hesitant about, another superintendent that I've been working with, is planning for that full funding, because really what that's relied on is whether we get full revenue from the state or not, right? What do the state's revenues look like? Last year was a perfect example of that, and so when you look at our June payment, it was actually less than the full funding than they said because Missouri revenues weren't coming in. So typically what I can foresee is that we start the year and we're getting full funded, but you never know by the end of the year, if Missouri revenues aren't coming in, they get back off on some of that. So that's just with as we plan, as we do budget updates and as we do visions, that'll be something that I try and keep you guys up to date on is what that's looks like, what that looks like from a period of years past, just so we can be hopefully as physically prudent as possible as we make decisions and plan for the future. So there's that upcoming, but we're glad that, I think they added $500 million to the education budget. So more money is never going to be bad, it's just planning, trying to plan safe for when we see that, if we see that. So, and then Title II, so something, you know, we've always wondered how some of these federal cuts at the government level, that we're going to level are going to trickle down. One that we think we're learning about, working with Dr. Everett, is probably Title II funding. We're planning on it being cut. So they've been removed, is kind of what they projected, and so the state hasn't even given us allocations because they don't think they're going to receive that. What that means for the Tigers and what that means for our community is we receive about $80,000 in Title II funding, and that covers, essentially covers one of our classroom elementary teachers, and it covers parent activities, so about $80,000. So that's something that we're going to keep, we're going to keep that feature, we're going to continue to try and do those parent activities because it's important for our community, we're going to have to find out another way to fund that. So these are things that are, there'll be more things that trickle down for the federal government, we don't know what they are, we don't know what it'll be this year or the next five years, but those are kind of things, when you look at revenue wise, when you look at budget wise, that we're going to have to plan for, make decisions for as we move forward, you know, because that revenue stream isn't going to be there. So just an update on some of those legislative things, and there'll probably be some more as we go throughout the summer, and I'll try and have something like this at every board meeting, some things, kind of prepare you for what we're hearing in the winter. So if anyone's had any questions, I'm welcome to take them at this time.
Next up, discussion items, first up is the Missouri Flex program, Dr. Miller.
Thank you. Thank you. Wanted to make the board aware of a new program that we're introducing at the high school. It's not new to the state, it actually has been around since one of the Senate bills from 2009. It's called the Missouri Flex Program. We currently offer different alternative routes to education that include everything from virtual learning. That'll be better. From virtual learning to, we've got Missouri Options. I know that I am always, always have my eyes open on any possible way that we can bring a kid closer to a high school diploma. So the Missouri Flex Program, again, it's offered by the state, but it isn't as closely mandated by the state. So it's a local control opportunity, where in its simplest form, a kid can go and work and actually be part of the school setting for two hours, and they're earning credits. So with Missouri Option, the main difference is they're studying the whole time to try to pass a GED or a HSET test. So when they're at our school halftime, they're studying to pass that test, it's really a, just an overall mastery thing. Once they get to that level and they can pass all of the tests, we give them one of our high school diplomas. With the Missouri Flex Program, you're actually creating almost like personalized coursework. So you may have a kid that wants to work halftime, and you can say, okay, when are you doing math? And you basically create individualized program based on individual kids' needs. They're still required to have a lot of supervision, and the time that they are in school, it's actually even more of an attendance challenge for a lot of them, it's 95%, they have to be there, no suspensions. It's a really good opportunity, but it will for a very specific kid. I know Rick Schwab has, is going to be running it at high school, and he is looking at perhaps piloting it with maybe two or three kids that it's an option for. So it's something that we're going to start, just something cool that we're doing for our kids and trying to get them access to a different type of education. Several area schools are using it. Blue Springs and Independence have a pretty good program. Joplin has one of the best programs in the state for it. I actually learned about it, when I was an assistant principal, I actually brought it up and wanted to offer it. It's, I actually learned about it through ORIC. And so if you think about ORIC, there's a lot of farm community in there, and so during farm season, these kids weren't getting credits enough, they were going and working in their parents' business or a situation like that. So in that situation, you can actually take what they're doing on the job training and create coursework. It's a lot of hours to create this for a kid, and it takes kind of some, an imaginative way, but they're doing math, and they're doing science, and they're doing all of the things. So just wanted to make the board aware, and I'm happy to answer any questions, or kind of wanted to just give you a heads up and be transparent in some of the things we're offering to our kids.
I'm glad you mentioned other schools that are doing it, that was the question I had. So that's nice that you have, you can network, I guess, and see pros and cons with that. Another thing I wanted to mention through Kansas City Regional Professional Development Center, it's a youth apprenticeship program that they have, and I know the consultant with that, she would be happy to visit with the board. The reason I mentioned that is that it almost seems like on a monthly basis, we're filling pure and custodial positions, and what this youth apprenticeship program does, they work with your high school students, they provide training for them with those roles, they earn a certificate, sorry, certificate, and then you're also eligible to have them work part time to fulfill some of those positions that were always, seems like on a monthly basis that were known. So I just wanted to mention that because it might be worth looking into.
I think Dr. Bolmore, didn't you try something like that? Maybe we've looked into having some of those job opportunities for our kids. I know it's something that we've looked at as a board, always open any additional opportunities we can bring to our kids, we're certainly like interested in talking about it. We offer, we have that entrepreneurship program too, that's been really successful. That, last year was the first time that we had offered that, it was a really big success with the kids, like they got, it's always interesting to go into those because the kids are so quiet and reserved, and then when you go and talk to them afterwards, they're like standing up and their confidence goes through the roof, but yeah, always eager to have additional opportunities.
And it would not, it would not interfere with the career center and what they offer, but it would also, you know, be a dual type of thing, because we're always looking for people where short-staffed, because there'd be a little paras in that type of thing, so I just mentioned that, it might be worth looking into, I think it is.
I like the program. I did it, they had it when I was in high school, I was.
You were a Flex kid?
I was that kid that could not, it would, I would not have graduated if I had to sit there all day. So it did work for me, and then, I mean, I was working when I graduated, so yeah.
And I'm guessing there wouldn't be any additional associated costs for it? It seems like it would fit right in.
So that's one of the reasons we're keeping it to two or three. So Rick Schwab, you have to have, it has to be supervised by a certified teacher, which Rick is fully certified and quite a good teacher. So there are some guidelines that they give you, but really, it's incredibly flexible in how we can get a kid a credit. So other than the time and the commitment and working with job sites, like it would require Rick to, in a very similar way of how we do our entrepreneurship program, the teacher that goes and does site visits, same, same thing with this, Rick would be doing site visits to make sure that they're actually getting the skills and the coursework is aligning with what they're actually doing. Other than the time, there really is no cost at all. One of the benefits that is huge is we get full ADA on them while they're at their job. I mean, it's, it's like we have I mean, it's, it's like we have created a personalized course for them. So it's no different than pulling a regular credit.
And understanding that it will probably be very popular in nature as student, other students find out about it. And then how do you plan to like integrate others or block them? Like through, for this year, what's that communication gonna look like for families as they, you know, their parents are probably gonna advocate hard for them?
That's a really good question. So I, one of my things that I say over and over to anyone who will listen to me is the best path to a high school diploma is high school. And I still stand by that. It is, it's, we offer an amazing service, and it's, it is far and away the best way to get a high school diploma. This is for a very specific type of kid that has to be referred by a principal or a counselor in order to do it. So this is a kid who's chronically truant, or who, you know, is working and would prefer to work. Or it is for a very specialized kid. Missouri Option really takes care of the kid that is credit deficient. This not, this isn't necessarily for a kid that's credit deficient or somebody who's given up on school. It's really just to meet their needs individually because they just have some different priorities and where they're headed. One of the things that Rick will also have to do is we have what's called an ICAP, which is every kid has a program of study that outlines kind of a trajectory on how they're gonna be successful post-high school diploma. And this has to align with their specific ICAP that they're doing as well, so.
Yeah, I think you look, if we look at, if we start to identify in years to come that the program grows and we do have a larger amount of students that fit into that pie, I think that the increased ADA revenue that you would see would offset any cost that you would need for additional teacher hours. Because typically, you're not gonna be pulling ADA from that student because they're probably not engaged, they're not showing up. So that's how you could offset that if we determine there's enough students that fit that pool, so.
The 95% attendance thing is, that's difficult for kids. So that's one of the things that will really, that's a requirement that allows us to offer that program. And so, I mean, we have a lot of kids that if they're not showing up to school, that's hard for them to maintain. So that's one of the ways that they're gonna qualify for this, is being able to have a good conversation with the principal. The parent has to agree, obviously, to sign off on that. And we don't know what we don't know yet, which is why we're offering it to two or three kids to kind of see what kind of man-hours it takes and how it goes. I honestly, the entrepreneurship program that we offered last year, I had high expectations for it. It was for, again, a special, different kind of kid. I was blown away at how successful it was just because you are meeting individual student needs, and they're deciding the path that they want to take. So it's been very successful, and I'm excited about this program as well.
All right. Thank you. Any other questions? All right, next up is convocation and back-to-school dates. Dr. Bolamore.
Yeah, just wanted to share some dates with the board. I'm gonna invite you to some of these events. So August 11th through 14th are the new teacher meetings. We'll invite all of our new Tigers that are coming to the district to join our staff as a teacher. And then the August 13th at 8:00 AM will be the new teacher breakfast after Montgomery. So you're all invited to that. So we introduce ourselves, they kind of get to know some of us, they can meet you guys. There's no speech needed. You get a breakfast, you don't have to stay very long. And then we get their pictures and kind of introduce the district to them. And then it starts three long days of drinking from a fire hose for them. So, but it will be good. We're kind of re-envisioning that four days. We're re-envisioning that, and we're gonna kind of kick it off with a, Dr. Miller's created a great plan for just a how to teach, how to be a teacher. So we're excited about that opportunity. August 15th will be the convocation, so 7:30 to 8:30 will be the breakfast. And then at 8:30, we'll move to the PAC and have our convocation, our welcome. We'll do our recognitions and those types of things. You guys are all welcome to that. We'd love to see you all there if you can make that happen. Usually that's done by about 9:30 or 10:00. So again, not a full day or even a full morning, but I know the staff loves it when you're there, and they're able to see you and support you. And I know you all have jobs, and there's lots of things here that we're asking you to take away from that. But if you can be there, we'd love to have you. So I wanted to invite you to those things. And then August 18th or 19th will be staff professional development before we kick off the next school year on August 20th. So excited about those days. Any questions you may have about that, we're happy to answer, but we're really excited to kick off the new year and welcome all of our new Tigers back.
Any questions? All right, next up, strategic planning work session. Dr. Bolamore.
Yeah, so just to follow up on the conversation that I shared in the superintendent's report. So just needing to set a date for this work session, just a planning work session for us. We'll receive, you know, kind of an overview of the Cambridge group and the Cambridge model that if we were to select them to go through the strategic planning model with us, what that would look like, you know, the commitment from us, the commitment from the district strategic plan committee, and then subcommittees that then work on goals that we select. Just kind of an overview of that, looking at probably about an hour. And then we would, we would then follow up with that if we select. There's no selection that would happen here that we would select at the next group if we want to move forward with them with an actual action. But what we would need is October 7th or 21st, looking at 5:30 again. We can do it right here. That way he can use the board to present and answer any questions that we may have about that model. Platte County recently used this model, speaks very highly of it. They've been both in school districts and they've worked with some other companies. So heard nothing but great things about it. Harrisonville, very similar sized district to us, has used this model as well and speaks very highly of it. So I'm excited for you guys to hear about it and see if this might be a good fit for our district.
So the 21st would be right up to MSBA conference. So if we want to go the 21st, we want to do the 7th. You do the 7th, you got a board meeting on 14th. And then conference.
The benefit to the 7th, if we select that date, is potentially we could get an overview cost from them and potentially approve it at that next board meeting. So we can get rolling, otherwise we're.
Versus a month.
Versus a month later, having to do that. So if we select that date, I'll tell them, hey, be ready for this. If we decide we want to move forward this, so we could have some more details to approve that at the October meeting. Again, the trainer that wants to present is available both of those dates, so I wanted to put it out to you guys.
7th. 7th.
All right, it's got Tiger at practice.
They're gonna let you dance.
I'll get you a doctor's.
All right, so entertain a motion to set the strategic planning work session for October the 7th at 5:30 of the board. First by Jill?
Second.
Second by Brett? All those in favor? And that passes 6 to 0. All right. It didn't say approve, but I just assumed. And last item is MSBA annual conference.
So last item, MSBA annual conference discussion. So that is coming up, October 23rd through the 25th. It is in Kansas City again. Some of us have attended in the past. There's lots of different work sessions there. They'll offer the new board member trainings again there, some different ones there if you want a refresher. Those are great ones to attend. There's a finance one that Tracy and I attended last year that was great. Linda puts that on, she's a great resource to use. I looked at last year's, there's topics such as, they have the board president workshop. I think that's on Wednesday. Thursday. Legislative updates, you can go to school communication strategies, what some districts did, passing bonds or levies, special education updates, literacy topics. I know a couple of years ago, we attended a literacy topic, school safety. There's always school safety topics. The nice thing about this conference is it really is tailored for your guys' perspective. So if we go as a district administrator or a building administrator, it's really gonna really dive deep into the nuts and bolts and how things are done. This is really tailored by MSBA and people that have been in your seats and worked with board members before, so it comes from your perspective. What I would love to do is if we could get everybody or the majority of us to attend on Thursday, maybe go to a couple of sessions before the lunchtime keynote speaker. We could sit together at the keynote speaker, and then we could kind of chat together about what we learned in our different sessions, things we liked or didn't like afterwards. It's a great way to spend a day. I think I found Friday to be more useful than Saturday in the past. Not that there's not good sessions on Saturday, but the Friday session really seemed to be kind of when that keynote is, you can go to a couple of sessions in the morning. We can split up and go to some different sessions and then go to that keynote together. So if you think that'll work in your calendar, and if you can't make it Friday, if you can just make it Saturday, that'd be great too. But if you can let us know if that's something you're interested in, Lisa can get us registered this week and next week. But we'd love to see you all. If you think you can commit now, love to have you. Otherwise, you can reach out to Lisa and let her know. But it really is, I know, I think Jill and Tracy and I had some really good experiences last year and brought back some great details to share with the group. So if you're able to attend, that would be great.
Can I just add one comment?
Absolutely.
If they can let me know this week. I am at a school conference all next week.
This week. Does anyone know for sure that they want Lisa to get you registered?
Yeah.
Okay. So, Jill, so everybody.
Yeah.